I'd like to call this March 9th, 2023 Board of Education Work Session to order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thocheck?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
All present.
We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That brings us to our district goals, which remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. Next, we have public comment. Beverly Jones. If you could state your name and address and be happy to do it.
My name is Beverly Jones. I am 1-5-1-3-4 Camden Circle, Strongsville. And I think that was it. Good evening. I've been talking to lots of, well, you know, people in the neighborhood, parents, citizens, taxpayers, you know, people that are just having, and I'm having conversations about how people feel about our school, our community, our children, our neighborhoods, our businesses, our employment opportunities, and for the most part, great, positive, very positive. People of Strongsville are glad to be here, including me. But I've also heard a concern or two that some people have about some things. And you know, the funny thing is that a lot of the people I talk to don't want to bring them here. And I'm like, come to the school board meeting, tell the board what your concern is. And there are people that just don't want to do that, that want to be anonymous. And I'm like, oh, not me. So I'm speaking for them tonight, okay? This is not just Bev Jones. I told them, you don't bite. I did. And but anyway, I've been hearing about security in our schools. Some of the, one of the concerns is security. And I know, you know, I've told people, we have the resource officer in the high school, the one in the middle school, and but the elementary parents want clear response to what's going on in the elementary schools as far as security, what's being done to protect our elementary schools. And I, I really don't have an answer, so I'm gonna put it out there to you that, and I'm sure you let them know, but a lot of them are unclear on what is going on as far as security in our elementary schools. So, few things I'm suggesting, they're suggesting, that need to be addressed. What strategic plans? You know, we, we, we've heard that, that there are strategic plans, but are there plans for the security in all of our schools? Okay? What training do the teachers have if there's a serious threat, something life, can they deal with a life-threatening injury before the first responders get there? That kind of training gets kind of serious. Another thing is concern is there are drills, active shooter drills, in the elementary schools. And I don't know a thing about them. I'm just living at my house and hearing these things. But active shooter drills, and I think they need more details. The elementary students that come home and say, we talked about it, they're not real clear on why they're doing it or what they're exactly supposed to do. So I said, well, I'll tell them, so I'm telling you. Okay? And parents want to know more of an explanation about how this issue is being approached at school. They just want to be on the same page as, as the teacher is. So the student goes, doesn't go away confused about what they're, you know, supposed to do. Okay? Now, as much as we hate to talk about this subject, this is the world we live in. I mean, we just gotta be real about it. And so, this topic, and I'm hoping that you can, would, you know, let them know, let us know, what is being done as far as a satisfactory security plan, and some procedures, and some training, and whatever you gotta do to, to let, you know, let the community know that this is being handled. So, that they would be trained. Our district needs to be trained for the times that we live in, to be prepared, God forbid, but to be prepared, and to inform our families that security, and I know this is true, security is a priority. So thank you.
Thank you, Bev.
Thank you, Bev. I'd just like to share a few updates for the questions that you asked. I know sometimes we don't always do that, but there's some specific things that we can easily address, and if I, if I fail to mention any of them, let me know afterwards, and I can share. So, let's just start kind of at the back and move forward. So, we work in collaboration with the Strongsville Police Department. They provide all of the training on what is our active threat and response. Every time we have an active threat drill, the police are in the building to monitor, to give feedback, and to work through that. So, parents are well aware when we do those, because every time we have an active threat drill, the principal sends home a notice to the parents, sharing, hey, here's what we had today, here's how it went, here's the things we, we went through. So, we have a specific training. Every new staff member that comes to, to our school district has an intensive training from the Strongsville Police Department, and then every year, the police does a refresher for all of our, our staff and our buildings. In terms of the safety protocols and features we have, we have police officers, not an SRO, but we have a safety element with Strongsville Police Officers in uniform that rotate between our elementary buildings and preschool every week. As you know, we've invested a lot in terms of, we have bolo sticks that are devices to keep the doors secure, we have window and door coverings, we have secure vestibules. Basically, everything that's on the wish list of the police has been implemented. Steve shared a few months ago about the new cameras that we're getting because of the, the grant money that he's worked to, to procure for the district. So in terms of, you know, the, the training of our staff, the active threat drills that are done with our kids, the safety features that we have in all of our buildings, yes, we don't tell every single component of that safety plan, but the things that we think are good for our community to know, we, we've shared that. And I would just share, you know, anytime we communicate these things in a variety of ways, right? And I completely understand, in the lives of busy parents, they're not going to catch everything that we share. So we always encourage people to reach out. So if I'm a parent, and I see that email from my building principal that says, hey, we just had an active threat drill, here's what this means, here's what we did, that would be a great opportunity to just ask a question. We always want to start at the lowest level possible, right? Start with the building level, ask the question, what's going on, what's the training there? That's a very non-threatening question that our folks are more than happy to answer. If it's a community member that doesn't have an affiliation with any of our buildings or schools, yeah, they can come to a board meeting, they can reach out to me. Mr. Brechner, our operations manager oversees the safety program and plan for our district. So we'd be happy to answer those specific questions at any time, but thank you for bringing it to our attention here tonight.
All right, next we have Bonnie Tens. Thank you. If you could state your name and address? You have three minutes, Bonnie. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Tennesse. I live at 9407 Brushwood Lane. And today I will, I have, I have comments that are not very easy for me to, you know, touch up on, but I will try to do my best. First, I would like to say that it's very insensitive on the part of this administration leadership and teachers to refer to students other than gifted and talented as a general population. I've heard that phrase from not only one teacher, but from others' administration and leadership. When I Google "general population" because I'm new to it, I didn't know the phrase, the next word came after that was jail. So I don't think it's a really nice thing to call the general population gifted and then general population. Maybe we should refer like on the reports that is referred, gifted and non-gifted, or achieve, you know, other group, but not that way. And I normally do not watch 60 Minutes with Superintendent, but I watched that, I watched that one, and there was one of the honors ELA teachers that said about those, that way, here's a quote, I think it's extremely important, that we have this considering we have a good group of students who absolutely love diving into the reading and writing, and this lets them express themselves through their self-motivation, and then they run with it so they can dive into topic much deeper than that of the general population. I do not like that phrase. Even if I was a good student, I would not put the other, others down by calling them general population. So my concerns today are some of components of the report card. I watched the Board of Education meeting, the State Report Card presentation where details were shared on revisions, new components, and rating that Strongsville received. Today, I would like to comment on the area of presentation of ongoing support. I provided the printouts where is, where I based the information from, and it's all based from report card side, and also from Ohio Education, Ohio Education side. So it's nothing that I, and also from the meeting. So first one, the early literacy letters training. This is what was said, quote, "The letters training is going tremendously assist our teachers and, and our kids in learning to read. We're looking probably two years out, two, three years out, just really see the payout in test scores and book. We know that test scores are about third grade and up, but what about the lower grades? At the end of this year, it's going to be five years since district hired the first literacy coach, trainer. This district now has four literacy coaches and all the materials that is needed, that we hear, and that a lot of training was already done in this area, yet when we look at the graph, instead of more students being on track, we have more off-track, instead of number of students decreasing as we go up the grade levels, we actually think the numbers are being increased." And it showed, I mean, that wasn't showed in details on the meeting, but it's also, when you click on it, it shows how many students are on track in which grade, and it's actually progressing the on-track less than the, than the other group. Based on the district enrollment, I do not understand that it's 1,515, 1,515 students are in those four grades, and yet we failing almost all these students to educate them on reading. And the reason why I am really concerned about it, because I am an, I wasn't born here, and I learned the language, and I do not understand how we can have a hard time with all the resources that we have, teach children how to read. I understand COVID was there, but when you look at the gifted children, they're all score over 95%. They were not affected. Why is the so-called the general population was not gifted was affected so much, and why are we not paying attention to that? Now, so if this was about, the next one, I have achieving and gap closing. There's a quote, "We need to make sure our subgroups are growing. We need to make sure that all of our kids are growing." When we look at the gifted and non-gifted test results, we see that for some reason, the non-gifted students are not growing. Not only they're not growing, they actually did not recover from being affected by COVID. Yet gifted never went below 95%. Why is that? Based on the data, when it comes to English, we have 18, not 29, 16, 29, 33% as, I mean, that are below the, below the year of 2019. That's a very big concern. And then when we look at math, it's no better than that. So that is another thing that I do not understand. Now, there is a big amount of effort being spent and coordinated to help all gifted students, including on the report card, to increase the district's score. Here's what's been said, "We identify the kids, but we can't officially count them as served until our teachers have received that 15 hours for four years of the role in high-quality professional development." So the students that are identified either as super cog or ELA, they can be counted. So yet, it is a measure of the report card, but it's more about growing our kids. We are taking the highest, well, we are, we are, okay, we are taking the highest performance and growing them, and that's what we need to continue to build. We can measure our kids, I don't know what they're referring as to those kids were, but we have lots of intervention in place. Our kids that are in general ed, maybe not the highest of the class, they are making gains, we are seeing good achievement, but we cannot ignore our highest learners. These are exact words. These are not my words, these are exact words that were said at that meeting. Highest achievers. So that we can't ignore highest achievers, learners achieve, higher achievers. And this is a part of she's working on, meaning the gifted coordinator, and she's gonna continue this for multiple years to build these cohorts until we are trained and conserve the kids and make the needs of our high learners. End of quote. The work, and then after that, it was said, the work and plan we have in place is right when we need it to be. I don't see it that way. We have non-gifted students way below to when they were in 2019, and here we are investing lots of effort in the area so we can score better on the gifted section on the report card. Let's not forget that gifted students identification is mandated, but the state, but the, the state, state not requires the education. I understand that we need to create more challenging curriculum for all students, including gifted, but we cannot forget and ignore the needs of not gifted. Another area I would like to comment is a gap closing component. I do not have too much time, but annual performance goals tables are very shocking to me, to say that one group is smarter than the other. If you look at the tables that are created by state or whoever that is, I know it wasn't by school, but to say that one group is smarter than others and to have that index score, that's the index score you're gonna see where it's established for different groups. That means white people are less smart than Asian people. And based on the performance table, white, and for, but the worst thing is that for math, the index for students with disabilities group is higher than the black, non-Hispanic group. Even English learners have higher grade index than blacks, non-Hispanic group. It's hard to believe, I'm referring blacks because that's what is blacks there, which is changed from African-American to blacks, so I'm reading the way the groups are established now, after the update of '22. It's hard to believe that students' performance divide based on the skin color or ethnicity is just wrong. In 2021, performance index scores were reduced, and thanks to that report card, report card looks better than they would now. If you look at that.
Bonnie, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, that was my last one. But I provided the information, and I also provided the scores and the percentages, how the different groups perform, and it's very sad that we have few students that are a minority group and others, and we can't bring them up. It's only 100 some compared to 5,000 some, and we can't even spend a month of effort to educate those children. They do deserve it. And to say that some of them are less smart than others, that's just, you know, and like I said, I came from another country, different country, and I've learned, okay? I've learned the English, I have the, I mean, English too, I have.
Bonnie, I have a question before you leave. Your, your first graph, your first handout, where is this from? This is, this does not.
This is a report card.
No, I'm saying, the, our report card has four stars from the district. We only have like 350, 400 third graders in our district. This has like 1,700 students.
No, that's exactly a print from that side. If you look at it, you click on that tab that is to the right, it's the second tab. When you get into the report card, you click on it, and then, you know, you can see it.
But you do understand that we don't, we have only like 350-ish or, you know, 400 and some third graders.
These are all students, these are all students from the, you know, okay, I'm gonna verify that, but I did.
This may be, I mean, you, I would just be, you may be looking at this from a K to, or this chart may be K to 3, so maybe looking at all of our K to 3 kids.
Yes, that's what I'm.
But this is, this is of a specific building, just so you, this is.
Yes, it's not a specific building, it's for all. It's not, it's not a specific building. I'm not saying that it's only one grade.
Okay.
I'm not saying that.
The other thing that I just want to make sure you're aware of before you leave is, although I, I wasn't clear on all of the points you were trying to make, the, the one about the different performance criteria based on race, ethnicity, disability, economic status, you do understand that that is set by the state of Ohio?
Oh, I understand that, but I do not understand why educators, I mean, they, you, I mean, you went there to change the report card.
Right.
Based on what that's driven by, but the educators can't go to Ohio and, you know, to Ohio Educational Association, say, we don't want that anymore, we want to treat average student the same. That's what I'm trying to say.
So what I'm sharing with you is there, there's federal law that requires, so the state of Ohio has to apply and, and be approved by federal government in terms of what criteria we have. So there's a couple things that are on the report card that are federally mandated, identifying and measuring student groups by race, ethnicity, economic status, that is federally driven, as well as there's some state-driven things. But so there, there's a lot of complexities to this, of what the state has the power to do, and what the federal government has the power to do. And I don't want you to build, I'm cautioning you from building a connection that because we may, we had a presentation, or we shared specifically a component of the report card that focused on our, our students that are identified as gifted, that that means that we're not focusing equal as attention on our, our students across all of our student groups. That's something that's important, I know, to Erin, our curriculum director, and, and me as well. So I would just, more than happy to have the conversation with you, if you want to come in and talk offline with me or Erin, to, to see the work that we're doing for all kids. But yeah, there's gonna be presentations where we highlight, here's what we're doing with, with gifted learners, here's what we're doing with our students with disabilities, here's what we're doing with all of our kids to help ensure that they can get the best education possible, but I appreciate your comments tonight.
Well, the thing is that I use the percentage that are there on the slide based on that the percentages do show that the gifted has over 95%, but the ones, and it's just Strongsville data, it's not like the given. Now, I understand that you should not go by those groups that are established, but yet you should provide a better education for some groups than others, not just because the requirements are lower than, you know, what it should be. That's all I'm saying.
All I'm saying, Bonnie, is we can't make that assumption, because the state set lower criteria, that Strongsville then has lower standards for that student, for those, that group of students. So that, that's not what's happening here. And again, like I said, we can more than welcome to talk later.
I know, but based on the printout that I provided, I see that it's Strongsville data based on the report card, that actually some students, group students not doing as well as some other groups, and I would like someone to look at that and then pay attention to that. I'm sorry, but.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. Uh, next, Katie Drake. Katie, if you could state your name and address, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Katie Drake, and my address is 20464 Village Green Drive. And I first wanted to say thank you for all your hard work, board, and I appreciate it. I have four kids in the district, and all in different buildings, and I'm so grateful for all the hard work that goes into the teaching of every single student here. I definitely feel like they're very cared for and looked at as a whole person, and not just as a statistic. So thank you. So I wanted to speak actually about the middle school today, and I wanted to ask the board for, I don't know, this is my first board meeting, so bear with me, I don't know exactly what I'm, the protocol is, but I wanted to bring up funding for a sensory room in the middle school. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the sensory room, but it is a place to help kids deregulate. I have a child on the spectrum, actually in the middle school, which he would not love that I'm talking about this right now, but he could very much use, kids that are mainstreamed into classrooms need spaces where they can deregulate, and there isn't something like that right now available in a place where they can have like darker lights or more, just things to help them calm down. So I brought up some, bear with me one second. Especially in the middle school, it seems like, and I spoke with Mrs. Boynton, which I also appreciate her hard work, being a middle school principal is no easy task. So I would like to say, why do we need it? A lot of kids, it actually helps with school avoidance, anxiety, intruency. The data shows that students are less accustomed to busy school environments, and classroom routines do this. Some children, such as students with autism or SPD, can easily become overwhelmed by touch, movement, sight, or sounds associated with the classroom learning environment. While sensory rooms are typically utilized by OT, behavioral health issues can be addressed by incorporating sensory breaks. Sensory rooms create a safe environment for all students to regulate their nervous systems, not just students on a caseload. So speaking to that, saying middle school, everyone's in deregulation in middle school, hormones are crazy, you know, we've had issues anyways in the middle school with just kids. So I feel like giving them this opportunity to be able to teach them how to deregulate, to teach them how to deescalate emotions and aggression and anger, I think that's just an opportunity to, to teach them. And my other thing I wanted to bring up about the middle school, which I just started talking to Dr. Reba about, is mentorship, because I also believe that, as Dr. Reba brought up in the PTA council meeting, that something they haven't seen before is just lack of parents caring about what's going on with their kids, and not all parents, it's probably like 5%, but there are kids that need people speaking into their lives. So I would love to see a mentorship happen in some way. I'm not sure what that looks like, but I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make it happen. I believe that we could even empower our high schoolers to speak into the middle schoolers' lives. I believe we could do, ask people in the community to step up and speak into the middle schoolers' lives, because there are kids that just don't have anyone who cares. So that's it for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do believe we're meeting here soon, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll meet and talk about some of the ideas you have, and appreciate you bringing those to our attention. In terms of the space, we did something at the high school this past year. It's been very successful. It kind of goes to exactly what you're talking about, so that's, we wanted to start there and see how that went, so that's something that Mr. Trahill, that are Director of Student Services, so we can add your idea to that and see what's a, what's a possibility for, for the middle school, yeah.
Katie, did you get my email that I sent?
I did, and I'm also trying to get grant money, so I'm working any angle I can to start bringing.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you got it.
Yes, thank you so much, I forgot to bring that up. Just nervous.
Yeah, thank you.
We get it. It's fine.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we, we're gonna go a little out of order here. We're gonna jump down to the Allen property proposal, under letter E, discussion item number one.
Good evening, my name's Mike Caldwell, and I'm representing the Facilities Development Committee. So at the Board of Education meeting on Thursday, February 9th, the Strongsville Lacrosse Club presented a proposal to invest in the former Allen School property to better suit the needs of their program. The proposal included a three-stage process for development, including three full-sized lacrosse fields, parking lot restoration, landscaping, and construction of permanent structures, including an equipment shed, pavilion, and practice wall. Within the proposal, the club asked the Board of Education to consider the following four conditions. Number one, a 15-year lease for use of the property. Number two, write a first refusal to extend that lease for an additional 10 years. Number three, permission to initiate fundraising for their first phase, and authorization to commence subsequent phases as the fundraising goals are achieved. And number four, authorization to collaborate with the district to pursue corporate sponsorship and naming rights for various components of the plan. During the same working session on February 9th, the Facilities Development Committee submitted a formal recommendation to initiate planning activities for the replacement of the Chapman, Sarar, Whitney, and the original portion of the Maraski Elementary Buildings, and the renovation of the Kinsner Elementary Building. Following this meeting, Dr. Reba established the Elementary Facilities Planning Committee, comprised of teachers, staff, and citizens, to begin that planning process. So this past Tuesday, on March 7th, the Facilities Development Committee reviewed the proposal from the Strongsville Lacrosse Club, in consideration with activities that are now underway with the Superintendent's Elementary Facilities Planning Committee. And so at this time, the Facilities Development Committee recommends to the Board of Education that a decision on the lacrosse proposal be deferred to allow time for the elementary planning activities to proceed.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you sharing the, the work of the committee and, and sharing the recommendation, and I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Hausum to, to lead a discussion on that recommendation and where the board would like to go next.
Does anyone want to start? I know Mike's time is a little limited, so if you have questions for Mike, you might want to ask them first.
Again, our thanks to the Facilities Development Committee for doing the, the work that you do to help us make intelligent decisions. I know the meeting itself was pulled together quickly to go through the materials. My schedule didn't allow, or else I would have made the meeting longer, I'm sure. So it was probably a good thing I wasn't there. But no, I appreciate it, the, you know, the, the recommendation is, is a cautious recommendation, it makes sense, so I don't think, I don't have any concern with the recommendation itself. I do have a concern that, it's not a time of the essence, but I think as a board, we just kind of need to discuss if we postpone this till, you know, when, when is the facility, the elementary facilities task group? facilities task group, how do we define that their work is done, that we can revisit this? So I actually had a chance to talk with Eric about it, and, you know, the part that I was impressed with again is, is they just want to be positive, they want to be helpful, you know, obviously they're coming at it from the standpoint of they're lacrosse parents. They want to do what they can to improve Strongsville's ability for the students or the children to play lacrosse. But he's very open to problem solving, he's very open to, you know, let's figure out what we need to do. But I do want to try as a board to say, can we balance delaying this forever? And forever is a little bit of a hyperbole, but can we continue to work in parallel? I think, speaking for myself, having been on the different groups for a while, the Allen property is, you know, we should be able to make some reasonable decisions about what we expect to happen at Allen, and once we make those reasonable decisions, we then can continue that work. But some of the, you know, some of the stuff that came out of the Facilities Development Committee looking at this were that overview of, hey, let's not make an extremely hasty decision. What happens if the dominoes fall and Albion suddenly becomes in-play, if that's a way to describe it? Is that better for our sports groups? The Albion property is currently used by our lacrosse team, so I think it's just healthy conversation, and I appreciate the time you guys put into it. So I think I've spoken enough.
Cameron, can you remind us of the timeline of when we would probably be bringing our two proposals to the community?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the tentative timeline right now is that the Elementary Planning Committee by July would have a good, solid foundation of the plans that they would then like to share with the community to get feedback. And then ultimately, October, November-ish is when those final plans would be presented to the board for consideration, so that would be the timeline.
Okay, so somewhere between July and October, we could revisit this safely, so the deferment won't be six months max? I feel like that's reasonable.
And do we know when lacrosse was planning on breaking ground for this? I know that they have some fundraising efforts underway, but do they have a timeline when they'd like?
Yeah, the one thing I don't recall, you and I met with them, Rich, I don't remember if there was specific, if you remember, they wanted to do it in phases. The part that I'm not sure about is, was there any phase for this spring season, which has started already and getting going, to even just do some minor field upgrades? I'm not sure. Albion has a lot of usable space, we've been using that for years for sports fields for lacrosse, has had access to that. But Allen, I'm not sure if, in its current condition, they can use it. So I don't know, is my answer, but I know part of what we talked about was they needed to do the fundraising to actually have the funds to start Phase 1 of their plan.
And I don't want to speak for the group, but I can tell you from the conversation I had with Eric, for them, it's a bit of a chicken and egg, you know? They need to know that there's something that is, that they can then turn into a fundraising ask, which I guess is common sense, you can't expect them to say, hey, we would like you to give us money for maybe we think we might just possibly do something here. So they need some specificity that way. The part that I thought was kind of neat was there, although they have the lease at the Albion and they have the lease at Allen, they don't have enough fields for practice, et cetera. They used this facility, the old Zellers facility, last year, and a lot of times, because the grass was too wet, they're playing on concrete, and, you know, ultimately, parents have to make decisions based on what they think is a good activity for their children. And if lacrosse comes and says, well, we can practice on concrete, you know, that's not a great marketing plan. So, but I think if it makes sense, we should follow up with the group and just keep the dialogue going, and then when we are able to make a decision, we can make a decision.
Are they using it now? Are they using it now for a practice field?
They are, but there's concerns about its ability, how well they can use it, and that, you know, part of, part of what they were looking at is...
Is upgrading it.
Upgrading the fields, because, as everyone in Strongsville probably knows, in the spring, when it rains, the grass is muddy. But, you know, like I said, I think it's great the way the facilities dealt, that's, when we created, created, when we visioned the Facilities Development Committee so many years ago, this is the kind of work we imagine.
Is everyone comfortable with that? We'll just continue the dialogue then, and...
I'll live back with them.
Yeah, we're thinking between, sometime between July and October, whatever.
So for them, it would be next season that they would have an answer.
Yeah, I think just so they have an idea of what they're waiting for and, you know...
They have an, I know they have an immediate need, because Eric's saying, you know, if we can't, you know, if we don't move forward on this, we're going to have to move forward with, you know, they have a long-term plan to secure fields.
Right.
And as I shared, and I shared before, it's a great problem to have, that we have in our community, too many children and too few fields.
Right.
And that's not just lacrosse, that's soccer, that's lacrosse, that's football, that's baseball, that, you know, the city has, you know, the city has a shortage of fields. So these are good problems to have to problem solve.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Ms. Hausum, if you're okay, we could just finish up the business services, so I'll have Mr. Brechner come up, and he's got one additional item for your consideration that will actually need a vote.
Sorry, let me just get to the, all right. So the other item underneath the Business Services section is the High School Track Project, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education accepts the proposal from Vasco Sports Contractors Field Turf for Strongsville High School Track rebuild at a cost of $565,000, 500, I'm sorry, $565,562 and zero cents.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stotcheck, second by Mrs. Kilbane. And discussion.
Steve, you want to give some detail on the project?
Sure, so this is the original track that we're looking to replace. If you've had the opportunity to walk it, it's very thin, in some places, it's actually down to the asphalt. When the field turf was put in, there have been some cracks that have developed over time. So this proposal and this price is a worst-case scenario, so this is a full-depth replacement, where Vasco comes in, takes off the current mat, rubberized track, they go ahead and what they call proof rolling, so they just take a big roller and run over it and see if it heaves, if it buckles, anything like that, so they call a proof roll. If it moves in any way, then they need to investigate why it's moving, which means the base is not solid, and if you don't address that, you could put new asphalt on top of it, you can put a new mat on top of it, but all it's going to do is crack and crumble underneath. So to avoid any of that, the proposal calls for, if it fails the proof roll, we would go ahead and take off the layer of asphalt, address the concerns, whether it be putting in a concrete stabilizer or actually putting in more rock, either one is an option. To hearken back to the project that was done in front of the high school in the teacher's lot, so-called teacher's lot, we were able to save some money because we were able to use stabilizer there rather than putting more rock in. So both are an option, but again, that's worst-case scenario. Best-case scenario, we rip off the mat, we proof roll, everything's good, and then we install a more advanced mat that then was put down. The system that we're purchasing not only involves a rubberized mat, but they also do a spray that not only has the integrity of the mat, maintains it, but it also allows it to be more waterproof, where water just flows off of it rather than staying underneath and crumbling the track again. Again, this is a vital, and I use that word, I don't think I've ever used that word before in an open session, but this one's, this is a vital project because it is becoming an unsafe circumstance on the track, and every year, we're having to put the proverbial Band-Aids on it. In fact, Vasco, it will come out and fix all of those issues with those temporary patches and not charge us, of course, for, because they know in a few short months, they're going to be tearing it all out anyways. This proposal also includes removing all of the grass and the grass area inside the stadium. It's becoming, well, it's to the point where it takes up a lot of maintenance. Before, when it was a grass field, it made sense to have a grass infield and grass areas to complement, but now that it's turf, it's actually more of a hassle, and also, all those grass clippings then go onto the turf, and now we have to clean off the turf. It'd be better just to eliminate all of those grass areas. All the curbing and fencing will be replaced, but that'll be done internally with our maintenance department. And also, a chute, which is a, where the sprinters start, will be added to the home side stadium at no additional cost. So that way, we've had many complaints, concerns, that all of our sprinters are on the visitor's side, it makes more sense to have it on the home side. So we would actually have chutes on both sides of the track at this point. We're not going to eliminate one, it will just be put in, in addition to the ones curving on the visitor's side.
What is the life expectancy slash, I don't want to say warranty, but if, what they would do if something were to go wrong with it after it's installed?
It comes with a five-year warranty, but there is also, what they would come, that's when the spray breaks down, they would just come and respray it, almost like an asphalt parking lot. I can tell you that very little maintenance was done on this current mat, and it's withheld for, I think, 19 years is the age of the stadium, something like that?
It was like in the 90s, wasn't it?
I think it was like 97?
It's about 22 years old.
Okay. So that's what, this one, current one, has lasted with admittedly very little maintenance, so this is a better system than was put in before. With some maintenance, it should last, I'm not going to guarantee anything. I know five years is guaranteed for them to have to replace it again, but we could extend the life, I think it'll be very similar to what we've experienced with this one.
Is there a maintenance plan or a plan to keep it in good working order going forward?
Yeah, I would, I have not had the conversation about money with, as far as a maintenance plan is concerned, because I didn't know if that was, you know, that's the next part of the discussion once this decision's made, because everyone would have their own pricing on that. But that's something definitely not with addressed with Vasco, but I do know that they would come and respray, much like they take care of the turf for us as well. So it'll be a one-stop shop for the stadium infield about who's helping us take care of it.
Would that be like a fraction of that, or would it be like $500,000 every time?
No, it would be a fraction.
No.
If it's $500,000 to spray it, I will go ahead and I'll put a Brechner truck on the side, find a spray, and we'll make sure we do that, so.
We won't approve that.
Yeah, yeah, we agree. When would they start this?
This summer. So the stadium, in effect, will be closed for the summer. I don't have a specific date yet, again, waiting for the decision.
Right.
But they assured me we can get it done this summer, so we would be seeing a new track by football season and running on it next spring.
Are other schools in the area using the same track and/or upgrading to it?
The ones that are lasting longer, yes.
I see, you already addressed option two here. Option one is apply green exchange zones. I'm a newbie to track, so can you let us know what that is?
So, and I believe, fresh my memory, is that $26,000? $27,000 and some change? So what that is, is during the sprints, you have an exchange zone that they can pass the baton. What that is, is honestly, it's painted green instead of black. I know aesthetically, it looks good, but for the price, I just, I did not, I would not recommend that to the board. It's already a costly project.
So that is not...
Option one is not included in that price. No.
Option two is, that's what Steve was talking about, was the getting rid of the grass, yeah.
Yeah, option one is not included in that. So if you included option one, you'd have to add 27 and some change to the total cost.
But we don't have to do that.
No, I'm not recommending that. The price that I have on the agenda does not include option one.
I've got a green highlighter over here we can...
No, it's not $500,000 we'll use it.
Steve, can you explain the mechanics again of worst-case scenario?
So the worst-case scenario is we have to excavate, peel off all the asphalt, go down full depth, and make sure that the base is stable, and then rebuild back up to the mat.
And that's the $500,000 cost?
Correct.
And if we don't have to do that, it'll be less?
You're looking at the overlay, is what it's called, you'd be right around, give or take, about $325,000.
So, George, do we need to change it to not to exceed? Because that, the language currently says "at the cost of."
We can. I mean, if it doesn't exceed it, it doesn't exceed it.
I just want to make sure the language allows us not to pay if we don't have to.
Right. We can make that adjustment.
I guess the question is, George, do you, I don't know if, this is what Rich is asking, but do you need to? If it's phrased as it is phrased right here, it doesn't obligate us to pay Vasco for work that they didn't do.
Correct.
But whatever the board feels comfortable with, you can do.
Let's make it not to exceed, so that, so that six months ago from now, and I'm rereading it, I don't have to remember.
Steve said he'd pick up the difference.
Got it in the minutes.
His donation.
The only other, I just wanted to be clear, it is out of the permanent improvement budget. And it's, at least from my perspective, it's nice that we're able to do this out of the permanent improvement budget, and this is our highest...
Rich, it'll be a transfer from the general fund at the next meeting to move it into the permanent improvement fund.
That's right.
It was in, well, we had, not, originally, we had HVAC in the budget for this year, but not in the forecast. We moved the HVAC the next school year, but with the planning of the elementary committees, depending on that outcome, we'll be using the monies that we have for that transfer to transfer the funds to the PI fund. So I'll have that, if this is approved, I'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, George, take the role.
And I've corrected the motion, so it's at a cost not to exceed $565,562.
Thank you.
So Ms. Stotcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, so now we will jump back up to the treasures report.
Thank you, Ms. Hausum. Do you have an item for discussion tonight, a presentation? So under the goal of financial prudence, and I believe this is, at least one of my goals, I think was one of the district goals for this year, was to develop a cash balance policy. So spending a few meetings with the finance, the Board Finance Committee over the past six months to kind of go through, back and forth through this, and kind of get to a position we are now to present it to the board, developed a proposal that, or a recommendation to the board for a cash balance policy. Currently, we don't have one, and it's good practice to have some sort of cash balance policy regardless of our financial position. So the purpose of the policy would be to define a minimum and maximum cash balance metrics to direct district cash. For below a minimum, explore expenditure reductions or new revenue options. For above a maximum, how do we invest those additional funds back into the district? Currently, we have no formal board policy. We did develop an internal metric to evaluate minimum cash balance for cost reductions and our new levy. We did that back in 2018. With those current internal metric... What those current internal metrics are that we established back at that time was we assess true cash days of the district with a target of sixty days or more. We maintain an annual unreserved general fund balance between five to fifteen percent of our general fund revenues. Our year-end expenditures will not exceed revenues. The five-year forecast will project fiscal stability for two years beyond the current school year, and our overall per pupil expenditures will be compared to similar districts. So that's our current internal metric, but not a formal policy. So at the finance committee, we talked about maximum cash balance guideline options. We currently have no guidelines in place, not internally or through board policy. There was an OASBO white paper on general revenue fund cash balance that was just issued, and it includes sample cash balance policies. It also includes best practices on what to make sure to include in your forecast and make sure you have, before you designate any funds, to have those funds covered. I did serve on this committee as well. So it was originally in 2018, and then in 2022 was upgraded. And OASBO stands for the Association of School Business Officials in Ohio. So some general options that we discussed at the finance committee was, one, the order of state recommends a ninety days cash on hand as a minimum, so that would increase our current sixty to ninety days minimum. Looking at that, what that would mean is, what I do on a monthly basis, when I do my month end, is kind of take the forecast and look at our general fund cash balances by month for the next, for the life of the forecast. So in this chart below, it shows that for each fiscal year, that what our ninety days cash or expenditures would be. So for example, we're just picking a month, in November of fiscal year 2024, our ninety days would be $20.8 million. So we would be above that threshold for that point in time. So where you see green is where we're above. So we're currently above that threshold in the life of the forecast currently. Another option is to transfer any excess funds as determined by the policy to a fund and/or funds designated for future capital improvements. Those funds are, it's called an O-7-O fund. It's created by board approval, board resolution. Funds can be used for the acquisition, construction, or improvement of fixed assets, which can include motor vehicles. And the authorizing must, resolution must identify the fixed assets that the funds will be reserved for. And any entity can have more than one O-7-O fund. Funds must be used within ten years of the creation of the fund. If not, the funds will return to the original source. However, the board can approve a resolution to create a new 7O fund and deposit the returned funds back into the newly created O-7-O fund at that time. And then, the board, through board resolution, can rescind the funds at any time, and the funds will go back to their original source. So if the funds came from the general fund, the board could rescind that fund, and they would return back to the general fund. And then another option was looking at other school districts for any, for any dollars above their threshold. They had use excess funds to fund short-term initiatives aligned to the district strategic plan to be prepared by the superintendent and approved by the board. So those were the different options we looked at. Ultimately, at our last finance committee, or board finance committee in February 26, we recommended the following policy. I'll read it. "The board believes that maintaining a cash reserve unencumbered, unreserved balance of ninety days of operating expenditures is necessary in the interests of sound fiscal management. The board affirms that tax levies may be pursued and/or the district's finances otherwise managed to ensure a general operating fund unencumbered, unreserved cash balance equivalent to at least ninety days of operating expenditures. Promptly upon receiving an indication that such cash balance may be achieved within any year of the five-year forecast, the treasurer's CFL shall report such a finding to the board. Upon such notification by the treasurer CFO, the superintendent and treasurer CFO will prepare and propose options that the board may consider to forestall such an eventuality. Further, when a general, when a general operating fund cash balance exceeds 150 days, the superintendent and/or treasurer may recommend the funds be transferred to an approved O-7-O capital projects fund for future capital improvements as approved by the board. The transfer must be approved by the board and cannot result in the general fund cash balance falling below ninety days in any year of the rolling five-year forecast." So any questions on the policy before I move on?
I do have a question, George. In the fourth, or the first line here of the policy, it is unencumbered, and then the fourth line, it's encumbered. Are those intended to be different?
No, I think that needs to be corrected.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you. You read it unencumbered, so I wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, that's, that's how it should, it should be unencumbered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The only other question I had wordsmithing is, the way it reads, I understand the intent, but the way it reads is, it says, promptly upon receiving an indication that such balance, such cash balance may be achieved. I'm not sure if that can be read as saying we've achieved the ninety days. The intent is that if we fall below the ninety days. So that would be the other wordsmithing is, is, you know, receiving any indication that the ninety-day cash balance falls below the threshold in any one year. I think it's clearer and gets rid of any ambiguity.
Okay. Make that change. Okay. So looking at our current benchmarks, so taking that graph that I showed with the ninety days and just looking at our cash balances for, at June 30th, for each of the months of the five-year forecast, looking at our highest monthly cash balance for that year, then our lowest, our annual expenditures, determining what a ninety-day cash balance should be, cash over ninety days, then the 150 days benchmark, and cash over 150 days. So for fiscal year 2324, which is next fiscal year, based on our current forecast in November, our lowest monthly cash balance would be 68.7 million. Our 150 days operating cash benchmark would be 34.9 million, and our cash over the 150 days would be 33.7 million. Looking at the last year of the forecast with those same metrics, our lowest monthly cash balance would be about 81.4 million. 150 days operating cash would be 37.7, and then the cash over 150 days would be 43.7 million. As part of the discussion with the finance committee, we looked at what number to recommend to move. We settled on 25 million. So kind of just simulating, taking that previous chart and moving 25 million, what that would look like using those same metrics for next school year, the lowest cash balance month would be 43.7 million. The 150 days operating cash benchmark would be 34.9 million. And then our cash over 150 days would leave a balance of 8.7. So we still have a cushion, just in case if things happen. And then the last year of the forecast, fiscal year 2627, our lowest monthly cash balance is 56.4 million. The 150 days benchmark would be 37.7 million. And then cash over 150 days would be 18.7 million. So that's if we move the 25 million at the end of, by the end of the school year. And then the intent of the policy would be to evaluate at the end of the school year and make any, looking at these metrics and making any recommendations one way or another to the board. The other thing we talked about at the finance committee was pros and cons of the policy. The pros first is that it would have one-time investments back to the school districts, reserves funds for future capital improvements. It gives the, our cash purpose, it directs it back into meaningful investments. And then the funds can be rescinded back via board action. Potential cons is future unknowns. We also have upcoming labor negotiations that could impact the five-year forecast and legislative impacts. Currently, we have House Bill One that could be a complete reduction to our revenues, state budgets. Right now, the proposed by any budget for the, at least for the state foundation is favorable, but that still has to go through the legislative process. And then the impact of expiring ester funds of what other additional resources that we might have to put back to the general fund. But since the funds can be rescinded back via board action to the original source, if they're still available, mitigates the cons stated above. So any questions before kind of move on to the establishing, the process of establishing an O-7-O fund?
I want to hear this part first.
Okay. So what I did for the next three slides is I took, I received the sample resolution, what would be adopted by the board from our attorney, and there's a few different sections to it. And what I have highlighted in yellow is where I need board feedback and board discussion on how we want, what do we want to include in the resolution? So the first item is, what do we want to designate the funds for? As part of the Ohio revised code, it can't be as vague as, for any future facility needs, we have to name the specific asset, but doesn't obligate us to that specific asset. So kind of being a little vague and specific at the same time. Right now, we put elementary schools, athletic facilities, and performing arts center for the capital projects funds. Doesn't obligate anything, it's just there just in case if those needs come up through any of this planning that we're doing now. And then the second piece is a maximum accumulation of what that fund. I just wanted to put, it's essentially a cap on how much accumulation over the ten years that monies can go in that fund. It could be anything we choose it to be. For this purpose now, I just chose 100 million, just to have the conversation started.
So my question is applicable right here.
Okay.
On slide four, it says, it said, the funds must be used within the ten years of the creation of the fund, right? So if we create the fund in July of 2023, we'd have till '33 to use it. But let's say we go and add another 25 million in '31. Are we still, so why wouldn't we then just make another O-7-O fund and not dump more into the time-limited one? Does that make sense? Like, if we can create many of those, why wouldn't?
You can create more than one.
Yeah, you can. So isn't that, wouldn't that be better suited for us?
But you could also, if you're going to create it for the same purpose, and it's just going to, just to ladder the expiration dates, when the ten years expires, the board could also renew it.
Just redo it?
And then the funds, it's, it's an accounting entry, but the funds would go back to where they came from, and then essentially go right back.
Go back again? So either way, it ends up the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Who decides where they go, though, George? Like, how do we do that? Like, you're saying, like, facilities, performing arts. Is there a vote on that? Do people decide? I mean, like.
Have the discussion right now, or we can bring it back, or.
But Ms. Cobain, are you talking about specifically, when we get specific of here's how we want to use these funds?
Yeah, like, these are very, like, broad, like, elementary school. Like, I don't know if they needed windows, or, you know what I mean? Like, how do we signify each one of those? And who gets to decide what's important and what's not? Do you know what I mean?
We do. The board.
It would come back to the board. It would be via recommend, at that point, it'd be a recommendation via the superintendent from the business services on any upgrades that we would be doing or new construction at that point. And then the board would need to approve that, similar to just how the track was approved now.
So the thing I would like us as a board to consider is the first couple of things, starting with that first paragraph of elementary school, athletic facilities, and performing arts center. I'd like to collapse that and have us consider it being the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school. I think it's a further conversation with the public if we're talking about athletic facilities or a performing arts center. The thing I like about Fund O-7-O, I think it's just good practice. You know, whether it's your personal, I look at the general fund as our checking account. And I think it's a good idea to say, we're not just going to keep all the money in the checking account. Because then the temptation is, is whenever we see something that we want, we think we need to or should buy, why haven't we got the money in the checking account? So I like an O-7-O fund because it says our capital, our buildings are important. Using an analogy for personal, it would be like saying, I'm going to have a college fund or a retirement fund, or a, I want a capital fund. I want to remodel the basement or the bathroom or whatever. So I'm going to set aside a fund, and I'm going to put money there, and it gives it direction, and it gives it purpose, and it gives the mental or the emotional energy that that's what this is for, so we can always realize that we have this project. The taxpayer should have the expectation, and we should deliver that we mean what we say, and we say what we mean. So saying that elementary schools are important and we should fund those, saying that our middle school and our high school are things that we're going to keep forefront, those buildings are their investment, we're going to keep it in the forefront of our mind, makes perfect sense to me. And 25 million is a reasonable amount. But not that I don't want wonderful athletic facilities or wonderful performing arts, a performing arts center, but that's a further discussion with the voter in my mind. So that was one of the considerations. And then the other, I'm comfortable with the number and the years. And the reason being is, is, you know, it's not a project for us to just keep on moving money and storing it away. This is the public's money. If we don't have a purpose for it, we don't have a, I don't have a strong argument to say, well, let's just keep taking it, and, you know, we'll have multiple O-7-O funds, et cetera. The point is, is that it gives the, it says we're committing not to spend tomorrow's dollars today. But if, I can't imagine a time where we have too much money. But if we don't have a purpose for this in ten years, or, you know, I can't imagine us, $100,000, if we were ever in a position to save that much money, it's another conversation we're going to have to have. But I do, I do want to compliment George that this has been in discussion for a while, and I think it's great that we're actually in a position to do it. It wasn't that many years ago that this was a pipe dream. Thanks. And we should thank the taxpayer and their commitment to us also.
So you're suggesting, say, elementary, middle school, and high school, and strike the athletic facilities and performing arts center?
Correct.
The only addition, if we're going to go the building route, we should include our preschool there as well. That way, pre-K to 12 is covered, yeah.
I look at preschool as part of the elementary, so that's fine. The point being that we're investing in our schools.
Right.
I think I can support that. One of the things I noticed when I read this was the missing middle school and high school. And I thought, I understand we're focusing on elementary now, but those buildings are certainly going to need some kind of care, you know, as we move on. So I think that is valuable. And I don't see how we won't spend all that money there. So I don't know that we need the other things. Even though they are in discussion with the, you know, current capital project, and that's great. It belongs, you know, there for now.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, and I can go either way, but I think it, I think there's enough of a direction that the public knows what the board intends, and it gives us some flexibility that, you know, if we have a need, it's a building need at our, for our core.
Anyone else? Discussion or questions?
Okay, so with that, I can make the, I can make those changes, and then I'll send it back out to the board to review the next section. And this is, we've already talked about it, but it was more of an FYI. So it would be, once it's approved, then that's when the tenure clock would be. So it would be plugged in the. So, it would be plugged in the, whatever date that it was approved on, and then it would expire at 2032. And then the, the last decision is, right now, any interest that's earned in general has to be posted to the general fund unless the board directs it. Otherwise, right now, the, we have our TIRF fund, so any, any interest that's earned there, we, we had a board resolution that would post to, that, that cash would get, that interest would go towards that cash that's designated there. So, same intent here, that this section of the resolution would be that any interest earned on this cash would be retained and posted to that fund. So, my recommendation is to keep that consistent. And then, as we talked about, the initial transfer of 25,000, that would, the initial transfer would be part of the resolution, then we would evaluate it every year, and then if there would be an additional transfer needed at the end of each fiscal year, it would, we wouldn't need this entire resolution, just, just our normal transfer language. And then, the other part where I need board feedback on is next steps. We have a couple of different options to move forward with this. One is, we, it's not scheduled yet, but I believe there will be a, a policy committee next month in April. We could include it with the policy committee. Then there would be, the policy committee timeframe would be, there would be three readings, first reading at the first board meeting in May, the second reading at the second re, reading in May, or second reading would be at the second meeting of May. And then, the adoption of the policy would be at the June 8th Board of Education meeting. And then, once the policy is adopted, then we can move forward to adopt the O seven O and transfer funds at the June 29th Board of Education meeting. Or, we can include it on the board of agenda, the board meeting agenda for next meeting, March 23rd. We would waive the first and second readings, we would adopt the policy at the March 23rd board meeting, and adopt the fund and transfer the funds at the April 6th board meeting.
So, we need to have discussion about our next steps.
Yeah, just any guidance if the board has any.
Does anyone have initial thoughts on their, on our next steps?
I feel like the purpose of the policy committee is to kind of vet and make some of the language, language changes that we're actively doing now as a whole group. So, I don't know that there's any value in running it through the whole committee again without all of our board members there. So, I think we've ultimately done those steps here tonight, so I'm okay with the option two.
I agree. We've already, we've already done a policy committee as a whole right here at this work session, so I would, I would suggest, let's, let's get this, so we can approve it at the next, at the early, next earliest meeting.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so with that, I'll make the language changes, send it out via board update, and then we'll have it on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Great. Thanks, George.
So, thanks, guys. And with that, that concludes my items for tonight.
All right. Like, I got to find my agenda now here. Okay, next on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Hausum. At this time, I'm going to ask our director of curriculum, Erin Green, she's going to come up, switch spots with George, to give the board an update on our letters training and program, and how that's going. As, as you all know, this is one of the priorities of the board. And so, we're in year two of three for the training, and so Erin's going to kind of give you an update of where we're at, what impact we're seeing, and where it's going from this point forward. So, Erin?
Great, thank you. As Dr. Reba talked about, it was about this time last year where we had our introductory presentation by Steve Owens, talking about the letters training, what that was, and how we're looking to implement it within the district. So, to go through, I want to give you a little bit of an update as to where we are, but I'm going to let the teachers tell you via video rather than me talking. So, I'll do a little bit of the introductory components, and then you'll see a few videos from the teachers. So, as a reminder, LETTERS stands for the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So, not a program, not a curriculum, but professional update, or professional development. Quick history of how we've arrived at this place. Back in 2018, we applied for and received a three-year grant from the Ohio Department of Education for right around 1.2 million dollars. With that, we did hire the three elementary literacy coaches, and this was pretty groundbreaking in Ohio at this point to start talking about the science of reading. So, it's not a new concept, but with regard to Ohio and starting to implement that approach. So, we trained our three literacy coaches in 2018 and 2019, and then we felt that that training was so instrumental that we wanted to bring it to all of our teachers in the district. Being cost-effective, we were trying to figure out a way to train all of our teachers K3 and all of our specialists without having to bring in a professional. And knowing Steve Owens, if you know Steve Owens, he said, "I'll do it. I'll get the training. I will be your trainer, if that's what you want." And that's one of the best decisions we have ever made as a district. You'll hear in the videos, all of the teachers talking about his energy and passion. He's across the hall from me every day doing letters training, he's across from George. George needs to close his door every day because of the passion that Steve has. So, he's had over 70 days of training just this year, and there's more to, to go as well. So, in last year, as Cameron said, 2021, our teachers all went through module one. So, that was kind of an introductory two-day, hey, here's what letters is, you're going to get more of this, this school year. So, this year, we did modules two, three, and four. Next year, we'll complete and have this group, this cohort, finish and do modules five, six, seven, and eight. Another advantage of doing this, we didn't know it at the time, but it does meet the requirements of the dyslexia law. So, that's an added bonus. We're going way above and beyond what's needed for that law. You need 18 hours of training. Just this year, our teachers will have had 48 hours of training. So, that's something we'll talk about as well, you know, has that been a good investment? Again, training, we have trained all K first, second, third grade teachers, we've trained intervention specialists, related services, our English learners, staff, titles, psychologists, principals, supervisors, coaches, etc. So, essentially, anyone who works with kids at the K3 level. Next year, we're going to add our second cohort, and they're going to start going through modules one through four. That's going to be our gifted intervention specialists, and then by law, we have to train our sixth through 12th grade intervention specialists, as well as any new hires. So, we want to keep everybody up to date with this. So, as a quick, quick overview, some of you are here for, for last year, but the science of reading basics, you're going to hear the teachers talk about this, so I just want to give you a little background and framework. This is how the brain word, works to learn how to read. So, it's a very simplistic formula, but there's a lot that goes into it. So, as the most, again, simplistic way to explain it, it's a multiplication problem. You have the word recognition, which are different components, I'll show on the next slide, times language comprehension, and that's what leads to reading comprehension, which is our ultimate goal. So, we want all kids to be able to comprehend what they read. If any part or portion of the word rec or the language comprehension is missing, because it's that multiplication problem, it's going to detract from that end result, and our kids aren't going to have full reading comprehension. There's no amount of skill that can compensate for lack of skill in either of the word rec or language comprehension. So, that is called the simple view of reading. Here's the other piece that our, our teachers learn about, and it's very popular when discussing this, and this is the reading rope, Scarborough's reading rope. Same concept, the bottom layer is your word recognition. So, that was that first circle on the last slide. It's composed of three strands, we call it, that are kind of, you know, metaphorically weaved together. And then, the upper end of the rope is the language comprehension. So, kids need to know how to read, but it's not just phonics skills. So, the top, the upper end of the rope are all the other components that go into the language comprehension. And you'll see that those also interweave, and then the two strands come together, not until you have that wound as a rope, so to speak, do we have full reading comprehension, Last little slide here, the really important piece to take away is that we can get 95% of our kids reading on grade level when they're explicitly taught. So, I love this little chart, this, this graph, if you will. It shows that 30% of our kids are going to learn to read basically no matter how they're taught, you know, good instruction, learn it from home, whatever the case may be. So, we get about a third of our kids like that. The big chunk there, that 50%, they're not going to pick it up unless they have explicit direct instruction in all the foundational skills. So, that occurs, or that adds to 80%. The other 15%, these are what we refer to sometimes in our MTSS meetings, where we are providing interventions, tiered supports for these students. They're going to get additional help, they're going to get that explicit instruction again, and at that point, we have 95% of our students able to read on grade level. There are 5% of our students that, we're not saying they won't learn to read, but they may not learn as quickly, or at the same rate, or up to grade level at the same time, because they may have cognitive disabilities.
Erin?
Yes?
That, that number is our kids?
That's a generality.
So, does, does the 5% track for us?
We're about 85% overall that are reading with, we don't break it down into how many read just on their own when they come in. We have, with our intervention tiered cones, we have about 85% of our kids that are in the green, able to read. We have another 10-ish percent, 10 to 12, that with the interventions are making gains, closing gaps. So, I would say similar, our students who are showing in the red aren't necessarily cognitively delayed or have cognitive disabilities, there may be some in there, but I, I don't want to label anyone that's in the red in our pyramid cones as having cognitive disabilities. I would say we're close, you know, with, with regard to what's up there. So, this was shown at Dr. Reba's State of the Schools, but it's just a quick Steve Owens video. I had to have Steve Owens in this, just because he's so great. So, here's his overview.
So, LETTERS stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It's not a curriculum, it's not a program. What it is, is ongoing professional development for teachers who are interested in teaching our students the best, most research-based strategies for reading and writing. What's great about LETTERS is it's not a fad, it's not something that's going to be here today and gone tomorrow, it's really based on science and research. And when I say science, I mean everything, linguistic specialists, cognitive therapists, educational professionals, you name it, across the gamut, thousands and thousands of studies have gone into looking at what makes the best readers and writers. We look at brain scans, eye movements, linguistic patterns, everything you would think, from ears to brain to mouth, to what makes a great reader. And the best part is, every single time we meet with our teachers, we get to look at the studies and apply to what we do in class. Take that, bring it to the class, and use what we've been learning to really make our readers that much more confident.
So, just again, as a reference point, year one is the top left triangle, that, those are the four modules our teachers are doing this year. That's the lower end of the rope. Next year, year two, there are the other four modules where we're going to get into the upper strands. So, the higher, these carry all the way through high school, honestly. But how do we improve these skills? So, you may say, yes, our kids know how to read, but it's more than just can they decode words? So, all of these modules next year are going to take us deeper into that. So, I want to share this video. This is Katie Hawk, principal at Whitney, and what she has to say. I thought she'd have an interesting perspective, as she'll talk about teacher to literacy coach, now principal.
So, I started in the classroom, I taught second grade. I taught second grade for about eight years, and back in the day, I thought I was a great teacher, doing all the things the right way, you know, did guided reading groups with leveled books, and not to say that that's a bad thing, but as I became a literacy coach, and we got a little bit more of an understanding through the process when we were working with the state on what does the continuum of literacy really look like, and how can we better support our kids from the simple view of reading, starting with phonemic awareness, with word decoding? And I realized along the way that I really wasn't doing it the right way. And so, we had a lot of time spent in letters training at that time, when I was a literacy coach, and just learning the progression of how we should really be teaching our kids how to read. And so, that's when decodables were brought in, and trying to figure out how we can utilize those in our classrooms to support our teachers. So, as a literacy coach, it was really nice because I was able to go in and help support the teachers with this new knowledge, and help them in, in, you know, small ways, whether it's showing them how to use a decodable, or figuring out what assessments we can use, such as a core phonics survey, or a phonemic awareness survey, to really get to the root of where our students are struggling with reading, so we can make sure that we're intervening in the best place possible. And then, moving from a literacy coach now to a building principal, it's great because we can have those conversations through our MTSS meetings, which are meetings that we use a couple times a year to look at our data. And we talk about each student, and how, what, what supports do each of our students need, and so the teachers are now coming with these assessments already given. And it really just helps us to make sure that we are individual, individualizing our instruction, and giving the kids the best support possible. Professional development is huge. We would not be able to continue growing as educators and learning without professional development. And Steve Owens has been amazing, you know, he's got great energy, but the way that he is teaching the staff, and staff meaning all staff, teachers, EL teachers, intervention specialists, building principals, he really does it in a way that helps us to understand what he's saying, and we have time to actually go back and practice with students in the classroom, which I think is huge, and then come back and have those conversations with your colleagues. And I think that's another important piece, is the professional development gives the teachers time to collaborate with their colleagues, and talk about the things that they're doing in the classroom, and, and what's working for them, and what's not. And the progression of this letters training is so very specific. So, we're starting in the very early phases of phonemic awareness, and then it moves to word recognition, and then it moves to language comprehension, and all the different pieces of comprehension. And so, the training, just like for students, we want it to be explicit, it's very explicit for the staff, too. So, it makes it easier for us to understand as we're moving along with each of our professional development trainings.
Okay, and so then I asked, picked a few teachers, and I didn't prompt them with what to say, how to say, gave them a few leading questions. Scott and Dan went around, and they talked to them. And I said, "I don't really care what exactly you say, here's a couple guiding questions you might want to talk about," but I didn't want to lead them in any direction. So, this is all what they came up with, just based on what they've done.
I have my master's in reading education, so I have a background on literacy, but I think a lot of what we're learning in letters, I almost didn't even know from, from my master's degree program. Like, I was aware of some of it, but not to the extent. So, it's been great, Steve is so passionate about it, too, so hearing him in these trainings and taking everything a step further, it's been good to not only just hear it, but actually practice it. So, practice it with students, and practice it in the letters trainings, and with our team, it's been good.
So, when I first found out I was going to letters training, I wasn't really sure what it was, and I was thinking, oh, this is just another program to implement. And after attending the first couple sessions, I realized it was more of a mindset, more of learning the rules and the strategies, and a way to teach versus this is a program to teach. Steve has been an amazing presenter, he's engaging, he makes it fun, we're up and moving, we are pretending like we are some of the letters, and how they match, and how they go together, dealing with the rules. So, not only are we laughing, but we're coming up with ways that we can make it more engaging for our students. And actually, doing the activities is a good way to show us how to work with the students.
With letters training, we're really learning about the science of reading, specifically with your brain, so how your brain learns to read. And it's had a few impacts for kindergarten specifically, obviously, it's impacting all of elementary, but it's really helping us teach our youngest learners how to read, and the ways that, you know, the brain is working behind the scenes to then support that learning.
It's been really beneficial for us to have letters training in Strongsville, led by one of our own. It's been really meaningful for us to learn about how complex the English language is compared to other language, and breaking that down to its most simple parts, so we can start right from the basic foundations in kindergarten.
Letters training has been awesome for me personally. I've been Wilson Reading certified, I've gone through Orton-Gillingham training, and learning about the science of how kids' brains work, and how to teach them to read, has kind of just been a culmination of everything I've ever learned. So, it's been amazing. So it's been amazing.
So I think that speaks volumes as to what the teachers are taking away from this. The next prompt that, you know, was kind of given, again, nothing specific they had to report on, but I know that it's a lot of time out of the classroom. So they're missing eight days out of the classroom. So the prompt was, you know, is this a good investment for teachers? Is it benefiting kids? And so you'll hear in the next few clips what the teachers say about the impact that it's having on students and how they're applying it.
In third grade, we have groups that are focusing on fluency, and we have groups that are focusing on reading comprehension and vocabulary and such. So we've been able to take what we learned in LETTERS about the simple view of reading and see in our MTSS meetings like what students really need, what's missing for them, and how can we like tie it all together so that they're a skilled reader.
LETTERS training has been really valuable to the Title I reading team specifically. I would say probably the most valuable part, starting out even from last year, was understanding the five components of reading, which are basically the building blocks of reading. So you start out with like phonemic awareness, which is understanding that words are made up of sounds, building onto phonics, which is understanding that those sounds have letter correspondences to them, letter patterns. Moving up to fluency, which is where once you understand the phonics rules and you are starting to read, that we're building the automaticity and the speed and the phrasing and things like that. And then moving up to vocabulary understanding, and all of those lower building blocks build up to a knowledge and comprehension. So the philosophy of that is that if there are any breakdowns in the lower levels of that ladder, those lower components of reading, you're never going to really be able to achieve full comprehension ability. Students' brains are working too hard just to figure out the words and just to decode the words. So they're not really able to get to that top point of understanding what the words mean and then putting all those words together to be able to figure out that there is some comprehension, there's something I'm learning here.
As a district, we've worked really hard this year on our standards and hitting the rigor of our standards and looking at what they're coming to us with and where they're going with it. And I think the way that LETTERS is broken apart is it's trying to show us where kids are going after first grade and how these skills build upon each other, but also peeling it back to where if they don't have these basic level skills that we're teaching in first grade, the rope is not going to continue. So I feel like the exciting thing about the LETTERS training moving forward is that we get to carry on and see beyond first grade, whereas the beginning of LETTERS was really focused and really applicable to, I would say, first grade.
Yes, yeah. And two, it was nice to see, say, if we have some kids that are those high achieving kids, here's something that we can do with them, like, or here's what they could be doing instead. So that was kind of nice to see that next step that maybe some of our kids can do. Like, we know where we can reach the most of our class right now, but we have some really smart cookies in our class, so it's nice to see what we can do with them too.
They're thinking about the code of English because that's pretty much, LETTERS summed up as, English is a complex code, and when we can crack the code, we can access so many more words and read more books.
LETTERS training has been so important in understanding how students learn to read and the foundation that they need in order to be a skilled reader going on into third, fourth, and fifth grade, and especially kindergarten, second grade, how important it is to get those beginning decoding skills before we can advance and move forward into fluency and comprehension, and how valuable it is to really improve those skills early on so that when they get to second and third grade, you can work on some higher level skills, but knowing that you can't get there until they have a solid foundation.
So I think you would agree that these teachers sound like experts when they're talking. You know, they know what they're talking about. This isn't just something that they're pretending to do, it's not a show they're putting on. They're living it, breathing it, doing it every day. And it's not just the nine pick teachers that we selected, there are a host of teachers. Predominantly, you know, K3, we're seeing it all the way through. So the next part, Samantha in the last video talked about cracking the code. And that's something we like to talk about, is that English is a complex code. So reading does not come naturally. You have to actually, you know, speaking comes naturally, babies can learn to talk, they mimic others, but reading has to actually be taught. And you have to form those neural, neural transmissions in the brain, build those pathways. So cracking the code, what does that mean? What does that look like?
So some of the new things that I've brought into my classroom are teaching kids what their mouth looks like when they make sounds. So it sounds simple, but just a little mirror to show the kids what the mouth should look like, and then have them look at their own, has been a huge change in teaching kids how to read.
So being an intervention specialist, I've previously gone through the Wilson Reading Training and the Orton-Gillingham Training. And so the LETTERS training was a good, put together of everything and reinforced the skills and made me more comfortable in what I was teaching to teach the students. So we talked about the vowel valley, so we're teaching not just the sounds, but this is what your mouth looks like when you make the sound, this is where your tongue is, where your lips are, how, you know, is it a voiced, unvoiced? It's a little, it's eye-opening to the students who are struggling because they need a little bit more than what some of the other students are getting. And I think that's that deep intense intervention that they need. So one thing that I've really started with the students is with the vowel valley, we have the mouth placements. We have, we talked about the lips and the tongue, and is the sound a voiced sound or unvoiced sound? And it's something I never learned in school, so I think that's really interesting. But when students aren't able to say the sounds correctly, they're not going to be able to read them, they're not going to be able to spell them. And so teaching those, the background of all those sounds has really been a way to help them remember what we're teaching them.
So one kind of mind shift for us would be focusing really on the production of the sound, so with your mouth, what it looks like, what it feels like in your mouth. We've been using mirrors here in kindergarten, so then it's not only us showing our mouth when making sounds, but the kids can use the mirrors to then grow the independence and really look at their mouth. What does it feel like? What does it sound like? You know, what are your teeth and tongue doing? What are your lips doing? So we really could use that right away. And then some of the other aspects with LETTERS, we're kind of building as we visit each model with Steve and Learn. We're working on that production of the sound level, and then as soon as they're kind of fluent with that and they've mastered how to make the sounds, what it feels like in the mouth, we can move on to reading words and then obviously building on the word knowledge, reading sentences. And so at our level, it's just that, those really basic, are they even making the sounds correctly to then set them up for success at the word level, at the sentence level? And it's really just that rocket from here, right? We build it right, and then it can take off.
Okay, just a few more sections. I had to really challenge myself to cut down the video because everything that all of these teachers said and the principals, and Steve, really important, and I wanted to include it all, but I also know we're on a time limit here. So question again that could frame this next series, how are students getting better instruction? So they've talked about this a little bit, but a few more insights here.
So we had this light bulb moment with one of my students. After the LETTERS training, I learned what percentage of syllable types we see in our language. And for example, the closed syllable occurs about 43% of the syllable types in our language. And when I, after I taught a student that syllable type, I said, now you can figure out 43% of these syllables when you're reading. And he was like, wow, I know a lot of words. So that was really neat.
But just the use of mirrors, which is something that we learn in LETTERS training, where a student can hold the mirror and I can be making the mouth movement, and they can look in the mirror and be able to see that it is the same or different as to what I'm doing. A lot of times you'll tell them to make the "shh" sound, and for the life of them, they're going "fff" and convinced that that "F" sound that they're making is a "TH", and it's not. And then all of a sudden, you give them that mirror and they stick their tongue out and they realize how it feels different than the "F" sound that they were just making. And they're like, oh, and then it clicks. And from then on, usually if you just give them a little prompt, they remember that experience with the mirror.
I would say we've had a lot of aha moments when we, even for us as teachers, like going through the training and seeing like, if this kid's making this mistake and you ask them this question or you tweak this, and then you'll be able to figure it out. And it's kind of like a, oh. And I've kind of seen the same thing with my kids in the classroom. Like, if they're not getting a certain letter sound, trying to focus on the mouth formation or trying to ask, do you hear my voice? Do you not hear my voice? And that little thing that clicks for a student makes them be like, okay, I've got it. We've been seeing that transpire in our foundations time and our reading time. I would say it's carried over into all areas of our teaching, across all curricula, because reading is in everything we do. So if we don't build those strong skills early on, I mean, it's tough. So that's why it's good that we're spending the time now. And I don't know, I've seen it with our highest kids, I've seen it with our lowest kids, it's just helping that little bit, that little piece of the puzzle we were missing and completing the puzzle, I would say.
I think what you said too about like, aha moments for us, were the same ones that the kids were like, oh, that's really cool. Like, we never thought to teach it that way before. So LETTERS has taught you all these different ways how to engage and interact with your students to help meet how their brains learn, which I feel like something we didn't, things we didn't know how to do before.
We've been able to bring in how we can build sounds together to make words. We really focus on simple words in the beginning of kindergarten, called CVC words, but after the kids have this solid foundation of what is a sound, then they can build more complex, they're learning how to read and spell, decoding and encoding. We do a lot of more language acquisition, are more intentional about the vocabulary, how we teach it, and incorporating that into our daily practice.
When Steve Owens hosts each session, it's kind of like introducing each next step. And we started talking about those early decoding skills and what you can do to get like the phonics and phonemic awareness, building to fluency. And, you know, as we continue to meet with him, I think we'll get more into the vocabulary and comprehension piece. But he always sends us away with things that you can take back the next day and do with your class. We talked at the last session about the open word sorts. So, you know, being able to take our fly leaf decodables from the district and have the kids look for, you know, whatever pattern that we're working on and doing an open word sort was something I literally could bring back and try the next day. Or, you know, he shares different sites that we can go to for resources. The big talk is, you know, we know what to do, but now where are the things that we can do it with? And Steve has been wonderful with sharing those resources and, you know, if you need a student struggling here, like, these are some things that you can do with them. And the LETTERS manual too kind of works through, you know, if this is where their deficit is, these are the skills they need to be working on so that we can really hone in on each individual student and not just teach all day to the whole group, but really get those individual skills that they need.
Okay. And the last compilation that we have here is talking what we just talked about with Emily. So if a student is struggling, how do you know what to do? What does that look like in class? What's the next step?
A lot of the third grade teachers have found that students, like they're, like we always say their spelling is bad and they don't know how to spell, and they're not spelling words correctly. And through one of the modules with Steve, we learned all about like identifying spelling patterns and why they may be spelling things incorrectly, and it might just be the way that they're hearing a sound or saying a sound. And so through that specific module, we were able to analyze spelling samples so we could look at some of our students, even our students who are on grade level or above grade level who are still spelling things wrong. We could take what we learned from Steve and those modules and analyze their spelling to help those students in smaller groups. We've been doing word study groups during IE time, which has been good. I would say analyzing the spelling samples was, was really valuable, just especially as a third grade teacher to some of my students who are reading on grade level, but they're missing like certain patterns or certain sounds. So to be able to look at our LETTERS resources and see what is it that they're missing? Is it that they don't know? The voice of a sound? Is it, are they moving their mouth incorrectly? Like, simple fixes that I didn't know about before, that little things that could go like a long way to help them just even feel more confident in their reading or their spelling or their writing. It's been nice.
Now, we've always had AIMS web assessments that we can use in the district, and they're great for benchmarking. But in some cases, these five components of reading have a lot of details woven into them. And those AIMS web assessments don't always give us the detail that we need. So I know they're struggling, I may know it's in a certain area or one of those components of reading, but I don't really know inside of that component which thing I need to target. So one assessment we learned a lot about was the past, and we learned how to administer it, record the data, interpret it, and then use that to make skill level groups for our students. And the past is a phonemic awareness assessment. So basically, you're having students play around with words, identifying beginning, middle, end, syllables, being able to add and delete sounds to change a word and then tell me what the new word is. And if they have that as a good foundation and understanding that words are made up of these sounds, that's like the precursor to reading. And a lot of times, if they have a strong phonemic awareness base, then that is a great predictor of reading success later on. So that assessment helps me target in of those things I mentioned, beginning, middle, end, manipulating and things like that, which exact skill they're having the biggest struggle with. So that I can take a group of students that are struggling on similar skills, have a skill group, and then identify targeted lessons that can help them fill those gaps. So that's one assessment that we learned a lot about that helps with that bottom level of those five components of reading. And the other one is the core, which is the next step, which is the phonics level. So it's actually taking letter patterns and having the students read anything from just letters and their sounds to actually putting them into simple words and then some of the more complex letter pattern relationships so that they're able to help me identify which areas they haven't learned yet or which areas are weak. Because until I can identify what those areas are, I can't build fluency with them. I can't expect a child to read fluency and automatically, fluently and automatically if they're not able to identify the pattern that they're seeing in the word. So those assessments again also help some of those higher level skill groups that maybe don't need the phonemic awareness. It helps me identify the areas that they need to work on the most, and we can just develop these targeted lessons for them within that group. And I know here at Whitney specifically, we have had a tremendous, I feel like, growth as far as their improvement and rate of improvement in the last year and two from last year, starting LETTERS training. Just having, I think, everyone on the same page, having the ability to let us do some of those assessments to help the classroom teachers out and then share all of that data and go over it when we have our MTSS meetings, there's just a lot more depth to the information that we have so that we can better put those students in groups and, and get those lessons targeted to where they are, and we're closing some of those gaps.
So I think that LETTERS training has been really useful for us as teachers and then bringing it into our classroom and changing the way our students are learning. We're finding ways to target those lagging skills in those areas where originally we would have collaborated and tried to figure out ways to help the students grow, but now we have a targeted direction to go with, okay, here's the skills that we're seeing where they're still lagging a little bit, and here's where you go next. So it's helping us find that next step that was a little bit missing beforehand.
And I liked that not only they gave us what, how to target those skills, but they gave us interventions to do with those students that are struggling. So if they're struggling with vowels, here's an intervention to do with those, with them and stuff like that, which is really helpful to like, know, here's exactly what you can do in your classroom, which was awesome.
So we were able to leave those trainings and directly apply what we learned into the classroom because they were ready-to-go activities or ready-to-go resources. We actually already had some of them in the district, just kind of reminding us of like how to use them and where they're most useful.
Something like LETTERS is so valuable, even for someone who, this is year 16 for me, and there are things that I walk away from thinking, I wish I would have known that when I started my career, you know, and just how we can help the students. And as an educator, that's your whole goal, right? Like, you want to help the students. And the LETTERS has been so prescriptive, and this is how you can help them. If they have a deficit with decoding, this is how you help them. If their deficit is fluency, this is how you help them. And kind of taking that step back and looking at how you can hit those specific goals.
Okay. And very last part here, some closing thoughts. We had Sam that you've heard from, she said something and I thought it just summed up really well, kind of validating what we're doing, and not just for us and for you as a board, for the investment, but just listening to this made me super proud.
It is so important, and I'm so proud and grateful to work in a district that has prioritized this. It's so meaningful to do this at the early ages, something that we've learned through our Science of Reading and LETTERS training is how important it is for the kids to have these skills by the time they leave first grade and, or they can fall behind really quickly. I've even moved, we're moving my family to Strongsville so that my daughter who's entering kindergarten next year can have a premier education where they're learning all of these things intentionally every day, and the teachers are trained and we have the resources, we have books kids can read. We're prompting them a certain way. In the past, we've had books that didn't really match up with how we're teaching. We're teaching different language structures than the books would allow them to access. Now we have all of these resources that they can access, which is building their confidence, and they're really growing as readers quickly.
So I don't think there's a better testament than what you just heard from Samantha, moving her family here so that her kids can get the education that's premier. So you heard Katie in the beginning reference, you know, I thought I was a good teacher, I didn't realize I was doing things wrong. This is something we say a lot, when you know better, you do better. So it's not that we were doing things necessarily wrong, but now we do know better. And we're implementing this LETTERS, the background, the training, the philosophical knowledge into what we're doing. So I realize this was lengthy. I do truly appreciate the support of the board. I know it's been one of your goals and priorities this year and next year in supporting LETTERS. While we're using SRR funds, I still know that it takes teachers out of the classroom. I know that it's important that you're seeing a payoff from what we're doing. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of the teachers, Katie and Steve, and then as well as Scott and Dan who went around and got the footage, as well as the other teachers that weren't featured, that are all embracing this as well. So questions that I can answer for you about anything that you saw or what the plans are for the future here?
Can we watch it all again?
Sure.
How many hours did you say our teachers are averaging? They need to have 18, but they're averaging...
Forty-eight, yeah, for this year alone.
And it's all through professional development?
So they get release time where we do sub them in the classroom. So we know that's a little bit of a, you know, they don't want to be on the classroom, but is that payoff worth it? And I think from what you're hearing, what we're seeing, what we're having implemented and the growth we're seeing from kids, I do feel that it has been a benefit.
Was anyone else looking at, I think it was like slide 19 where it had the mouths in the background? And I was trying to make the sounds with it. I was like, okay, we missed something. I was going through some time.
Erin, are we on track?
With regard to the training, we are.
And we have one more year correct after...
Correct. So we'll do the other four modules next year and then start the cohort of other teachers.
It's very impressive. Like I said, I mean, I felt my three children got a great education. I wish I could take them back and start over again today.
Sure. That's how I feel about my teaching as well, you know? What could I have done differently? But when you know better, you do better. It's what we just have to keep focusing on.
You know, it reminds me of, as Erin said, not to be redundant, but I mean, just how impressive the depth of knowledge our teachers that shared and they're representative of all of our teachers that are doing this work. But the word, you know, in today's education, sometimes there's words thrown out all the time that are kind of catchy in today's day and age. And the science of is one of those words. But if you look at really what the intentionality of it is, it is about saying, what do we know about how the brain works, how people learn? And that's meaningful, right? So I spent the last day and a half in Columbus and part of what we were learning as educational leaders was the science of learning, right? And so the science of learning is looking at that brain research and what kids need to be able to know and do and interact with learning around them. That's going to make it more sticky. And so if you take a look at, you know, we kind of talked about this analogy of a dial, right? And that dial has many different layers. And our teachers now know what those dials are and know when to turn them and when to move them and when to access them. And I think that science piece, somebody may think that mirror is such a simple idea or concept, right? But it's kind of one of those things. That's how the brain works. I can, I could see it, I could feel it, I can, I could put it in my own view. And so I just want to, as we see, hear some, education has buzzwords, just like any industry has buzzwords. But it really has looked at how we do our work with developing learners, young learners in this case, and look at it from a very analytics approach, right? Where is the breakdown? I think Kim talked about it, right? Kim did a great job of explaining, hey, I used to know there was a deficit area here, but I didn't know where to start from that point. Now I've got the tools to break it down even further, but we can still do it in a human way that helps develop our kids based on their individual needs. So I do feel we're on track. I feel we're on track with building the knowledge and investing in the development of our staff. And that's the best thing. I, you know, they talked about at the beginning, you know, the realization that Kristen said of, it's not a program. It's a mindset, it's approach, it's a set of tools so that they can use it based on the kids that are in front of them versus a canned program that's used as a one size fits all model. So I appreciate you Erin for putting that all together and the leadership you provided to make this a reality for our district.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Richard. I have four questions.
Okay.
Question one, sorry, I'm sorry. Question one is, so one of the, one of the themes I gathered was we have a lot of diagnostic tests. Is it too early to start saying, hey, is AMES the right test? Or do we swap out and have a better test? I just want to avoid us bureaucratically doing this one test because we've always done it, whether it's, whether it's Iowa Basics, that's the one I remember. Now it's AMES. And now they need other tests. Is it too early to have that conversation? Are you, are you thinking about it?
I think it's a fair question. There are very few tools on the market that are as norm referenced, utilized, supported as AMES. We've used it probably 12 years now in the district and we get really good data. As you said, it's more of an overview, a diagnostic, three times a year are kids making growth. Those other assessments that Kim referenced, we then pinpoint exactly where that breakdown is. So the big question is going to be, is it an approved assessment for the dyslexia training? I suspect it will be, but we haven't officially heard that yet.
It's just, it's one of those trends we always hear, the kids are over tests, et cetera. And if, you know, as long as we're thinking about it and we can eliminate tests that don't have value, great.
And I would say it has a ton of value. We...
I'm, I don't want to, it's not that I'm picking on AMES, I'm just picking on general. The second one was the things like, you know, you said that the training is accepted for the dyslexia stuff. Do we have the right tools for those learners that do need that?
We do.
What I'm worried about is, is that we're jumping through hoops to make the state happy. But at the end of the day, it's the kids that we need to be able to service.
So we put this into place prior to the dyslexia law even being on the radar. We don't have a lot to change, as we talked about before, to meet the requirements of the law. And really all that is doing is helping districts who aren't at a place where we are, get those parameters in place. Are they doing diagnostics? Can they drill down, do interventions? Are kids making gains? So I would say that it's not anything about, you know, jumping through hoops. This is truly what's best for kids.
And there isn't anything else or more we should be thinking about?
Not at this time. We officially start implementing next year to meet the mandates of the law. I feel really confident with the work of Lindsay Art, that we're in a great place.
Third question, these still are on our radar. When do we start seeing improvement here?
Talking about the report card. What's exciting is we're starting to see growth this year already, looking at our AMES cones. We know that the first official data point is the third grade reading test. I don't know, you know, how much growth that can be attributed to letters will come this year because our third grade students didn't have a whole lot of the implementation yet. And it's hard to, you know, challenge, what variable is it? Is it the work that Amy's doing with the strategies and the metacognitive, the one page, all of that? Is it letters? It could be a combination of things, but you know, within the next few years, I highly anticipate that we're going to see gains and payoffs from this.
2025?
Yes.
And I would challenge the board to look beyond just one data source, right? This is, it's not, it's a valuable data source, but it's one data source and the measures that are on this front page, even though this isn't our data, is about AMES web. So it's measuring where was a kid in relation to the AMES web benchmark in first grade, you know? And so as Erin said, that's a general diagnostic tool. So I think it'd be important to talk about, hey, what are those foundational literacy skills that we're building? What assessments do we have to say how well that's working? And put those data points compiled together to tell a broader story, state report card being one of those.
And I don't disagree. It's just at the end of the day, either the report card means something or we need to send Cameron back to Columbus to get an even better report card. Fourth question, I was, and this is the geek in me. I was wondering about the science of reading in other languages. I can just Google it, but if you already know, if you already have a link I can follow, just email me.
Tell me a little bit more what you mean.
So all of this is English centered and all of the science of reading is based on English language. I'm curious whether the science of reading translates to other Western languages?
Gotcha.
Does it translate to Chinese, which is a whole different...
Right.
Cyrillic languages? I don't expect an answer. It's more the geek in me. So I know what I'll do on Google tonight.
Sounds fun.
Can't wait to hear that.
Erin, I do have one question, this kind of follow up from Richard, is they emphasized here that this is PD, it's a way of thinking about reading, not a program or a plan.
Right.
So when we're talking about application, what, what does that look like? What does a parent expect to see? Because it seems like it's at the will of the, of the teacher, right? So it's, these teachers featured here, obviously very excited about, they're going to go try these things right away. Would you say that's generally what we're seeing? And if, if there's people who aren't as excited, how do we handle that? Or is it just kind of luck of the draw for parents?
So that, that's a great question. We went into the year with the general, general thinking of, we're going to train the staff. You know, they can start to implement things as they see fit, but they're not going to know enough until they've gone through the first four modules. So if you remember, I don't, way back when we had our board retreat, I had for an example here, this teaching reading in Strongsville City Schools. And it talks about, you know, what, what looks different now? It was a little premature to give this to parents, but we're at a place where I feel this is what we, we need to express to parents, that they're going to see changes in. So once the teachers get through these first four modules, we're also starting to work with the principals who also go through the training. Our last elementary curriculum meeting, we started talking about what should you be seeing in classrooms when they're following the science of reading? This is what it'll look like with decoding. This is what it'll look like with comprehension. These are the, you shouldn't be hearing the three queuing system where we say, oh, look at the pictures and take a guess. You know, so some qualifiers for principals as to what that looks like, sounds like and should be happening. When we move into next year, as part of the strategic plan, I know you're aware, but we're going to do a comprehensive audit of our K5 materials. We are going to, at that point, say what is aligned with the science of reading? What maybe isn't best practice anymore? And what do we need to do to get everything in the hands of teachers for science of reading and in teaching in this way?
Did you say that's happening next year, the audit?
It is, yes. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay.
Questions for Erin? Comments? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
That brings us to item J, Board of Education Other. Does anyone have any others? All right, hearing no others. We do have need for executive session to discuss...
To consider the employment of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
Hang on a second. I got logged out. Trying to get logged back in. Okay, sorry.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ooh.
It is, it is lent. I give up not seconding.
He's a man of his word.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mr. Miko.
This is exciting for us.
No, just me. And I just drew a blank. Okay. We'll enter into executive...
Any discussion?
Any discussion.